Can I ask one question first? So is it everything after 7:50 requires that quorum?
No, just the one. Just the one.
Okay.
Okay. So. Here we go.
All right. See, Square is still populating, so. All right, do we have everybody in?
Yes.
Like it. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Marissa Elkins. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I'm filling in for George. Never say his last name right. Kohut. Who is away. And so, thank you for your patience. We are a little shorthanded tonight. And so, we were trying to see if we could have a quorum we need, which we have a quorum, the quorum we need to begin. But. At 7:50, that hearing, we need to acquire one more person for that hearing. But we'll keep you posted. We're working on that. So, just to begin with, on the agenda, we, before we get started with the agenda items, I would like to open briefly for, to hear if there's any public comment. I would just note that the public comment period is for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. If you have something you want to address to the, the Planning Board, I would also note that anything that is scheduled to be or expected to be before us in a future Planning Board meeting, we cannot hear a comment on that because that would constitute ex parte communication without both, without all sides present. And so, if you were commenting on something that we know is coming before us in a, in the, in the near future, I will be cutting, I will have to cut you off because to allow further comment on something like that will be, would be a violation of open meeting laws. I would note that there, I know there's some discussion in the community about issues around the St. John's Church. And that is something that we are going to be hearing in the future, in the near future. And there will be an opportunity to speak on that issue. So if you're, if you're hoping to comment on that tonight, that is going to be something that, according to open meeting laws, I will not be able to allow to proceed tonight. But you will have another opportunity in the future to speak on that. So, so with that said, if you can raise your hand icon or if you can indicate. So I see Terrence Masterson. And do I need to?
You can unmute yourself, Terry.
Can you hear me? Could you tell us where those clauses are in the open meetings law?
Off the top of my head, I cannot. I do, I do know that. A, that it is a, that hearings where there's something at issue that's before us is, requires that we hear, that both parties, any parties, interested parties have the opportunity to speak and are, and it's not, that we don't take comment when everybody hasn't had notice and opportunity to be present. So, so no, I don't know the clause off the top of my head. But I do, I'm confident that that is what's expected.
You can't cite the clause. And you are also saying in essence that you cannot entertain public comment on a topic that is not on an agenda right now.
That, that is correct. It is, it is, I can't under, on something that I know will be before us. And on the issue of specifically, I can, I can tell you that if it's the St. Edward's Church, that is a matter that's on appeal, that will be coming back to the Planning Board in the future. So we, we know for sure that is on appeal. And that is something that could come before us, will come before us.
That's under the, that's under MGL. That's under MGL. You can Google it. It's on the state statute. So anything that could, that the Board knows will be coming before them, they're barred from speaking about it because it's not, it's considered a violation of open meeting law because only one party is able to, it's not on a posted agenda. It hasn't been notified to the abutters. It hasn't been notified to the property owner. So that's the reason why the Board can't hear on, on the item.
You just said that the Board members can't speak to the issue, but we're here to simply voice public concern about the issue. That's point number one. And then point number two is, the paradox here is that you are identifying a potential agenda item for which there is no public knowledge, but yet you are taking public action to censor our comments.
What I would say is that there is going to be an opport, Sam, I got it. There is going to be, because we know it's going to be an agenda, an agenda item at that hearing, there will be an opportunity for all interested parties to speak. And it is at that time that we have an obligation to hear all public comment and, and will, and will certainly. What we cannot do is something that we know is going to be before, and this is in that category, something we know is before us because it is in an appeal status. We cannot, we cannot hear a comment on it.
Is the appeal status a public issue now?
We, it is, it is, it has been appealed and it is coming before us.
There's a public document.
I appreciate that you want to speak. I appreciate that you want to, was to speak. And we, and we certainly are going to give every opportunity according to the notice requirements that are required of us. We could be, and certainly in that circumstance, if we don't allow you to speak, you would have a First Amendment issue and to press. And so, absolutely, you will be heard and, and so forth. But by the same token, if we hear you tonight on something that we know is coming before us, we could be subject to an open meetings law violation that puts us in jeopardy. So I would ask that you please respect our interpretation of this, of this and, and know that you'll absolutely have the opportunity to comment in, in the future when it is on the agenda. And if the status changes and it's not on appeal, and so therefore is not going to be, then it will be back in, just subject to open comment. But it is, it is known now that it is a future agenda item. So, um, so with that is. Is there, so Mr. Masterson, is there, is there for anything else that you wish to comment on or?
I would like to say something.
Sure, Mr. Dunn.
I just. Sorry. Yeah. So my name is John Dunn. I live at 213 State Street in Northampton. I'm here to ask the Planning Board's assistance in an overall matter of historic preservation in the city. So thanks for the opportunity to speak. You know, I've been involved in affordable housing development and incidentally preserving historic buildings in Massachusetts and Connecticut for over 30 years. Four of those buildings are in Northampton. They're still in Northampton. And they were said to be close to the end of their lifespan. But in fact, the community discovered ways to preserve them and keep them as community resources for years to come. So on Sunday, The New York Times had a full-page article about the latest amenity that people buying high-end housing want. Guess what it is? It's views of historic architecture. Now, I had been here specifically to ask for an intervention in a specific process, but I'm not going to address that. I don't claim to be an expert on zoning, but it appears to me that many of the ordinances, the regulations surrounding historic preservation in the city are flawed. And they're in conflict with one another. And they need to be looked at very carefully. When. Someone submits a zoning permit application and describes all of the buildings on the site, two of which they plan to demolish and one of which they plan to keep, if they should change their mind about that, it seems like it should be a matter for the Planning Board to look again at the permit. But in general. You know, historic buildings are an amenity that are of extreme importance in this city. You know, if people don't let, move here from other places because we're close to the ocean, you know, or we're close to the mountains, you know, they move here because the character of the city is interesting. And every time you knock down an historic building, and I've seen many of them destroyed in the years that I've lived here, every time you do that, you diminish the value of everybody's seen environment. So I'd like to see the Planning Board review the status of any project that has to do with historic preservation. And, you know, suggest a cooperative effort among developers, the community, the city, the Historic Commission, who in many cases, for some reason, because of some of these ordinances, has no ability to weigh in on, on the destruction of, of historic buildings. So. Let's try to keep the ones that we have. Maybe if, if some of the historic buildings in the city remain, people will pay even more than $750,000 for condos downtown.
We're getting pretty specific here.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, thank you and thank you for that comment. Anybody else wish to? A public comment? All right. Carolyn, do I need to make a motion? Do I need to hear a motion to close public comment? Or can I just move along?
Just move along.
Moving right along. Thank you. So thank you for your patience. I know we're a little behind schedule. So the first, the 7:00 PM agenda item was the site plan of Michael and Barbara Fisher for a detached third unit at 129 North Street. And who do we have here to speak on that?
Myself, Michael Fisher.
All right, thank you. Hi.
Hello, everyone. I'll start sharing my screen so we can review the site plan. Can screen sharing be enabled, please?
We need to make a motion to start the public hearing?
No.
We hear the presentation and then we open public comment.
Well, no, I mean, you open the seven o'clock hearing, but there's no need to mo, make a motion to open the hearing.
Your patience, everybody, is I, I get the rhythm that George just has in his bones.
Is everyone able to see the site plan on my screen? Very good. So again, my name is Michael Fisher. My wife is Barbara Fisher. A little bit of history on the property. We bought this property in October of 2019. It is a two-family home with a garage. We, there are two, two-bedroom apartments in the home. We've fully renovated both of those apartments. And we occupy the apartment on the first floor. This project consists of the demolition of the existing garage as shown in this large rectangle here on the property and the construction of a new garage with apartment above it where you can see in the dashed lines. As far as the existing garage is concerned, it is unfortunately no longer structurally viable. The fieldstone foundation walls are collapsing. I had brought an engineer in to consult with him about the possibility of saving the garage and renovating it to another unit. And the conclusion is that that just is not at all viable. So we began working with the local architect, Mary Yun, to just design the proposed garage and apartment. It is approximately 1,056 square feet of living space with about 384 square feet of garage space. The footprint of the new building is 24 by 30. It is located well within the 10-foot sideline setbacks and the 20-foot setback in the rear of the property. The height of this building is three feet lower than the height of the main house. Let's call it. Two points that I want to make about the location of the new building on the property is that great care was taken to locate it with consideration of the views of the neighboring houses, specifically this house here and this house here. We've got a lot of room in the back that we could have located the property, but we chose to orient this building closer to the back of the main house and kind of in between the two houses here. So it doesn't obstruct primarily the view of this house, you know, looking out towards the cemetery. The other point I wanted to make about the location of this house is as you can see, it's actually much further away from the other houses than the existing garages. So let me just scroll down a little bit here. Another view of the property. The driveway will be located along the right-hand side of the property. There is no new curb cut that's necessary for the driveway. The open space on the property is at 55.3%. There is parking for six cars on the driveway. I'm sorry, five cars on the driveway and a sixth car in the garage, right in this area here. The utilities for this new building are accessed from the basement of the main house. When we upgraded the electric on the main house, we installed a third electrical meter and panel, an owner's meter. So the provision was made to be able to access those utilities below ground. The sanitary sewer connection will be made right under the existing driveway now. It exits the house to the side near the rear of the house and will be able to tie in back there. The front view of the house, looking at it from the street, is, as you see it here. The color palette will be in keeping with the neighboring structures. I think it's going to be largely white with a black window trim. So it'll be very, very in common with the main house of the property and other houses around it. It has a standing seam, metal seam roof that is solar and PV panel ready. There are dark sky compliant lighting fixtures. Let me scroll down here and show you the side view of the property. This is the view seen from the neighboring houses. So as you can see, the garage doors along the side of the house, there are two downspouts that will drain to footing drains. And the siding is going to be a combination of James Hardy shingle and vertical panel siding. Rear view of the property shows an elevated deck in the back. And the other side view of the property of the building that faces the cemetery is as you see it here. I think that's it. Are there any questions anybody has?
Carolyn, should I open it up to public comment now or should I wait a minute?
Yeah, I would see if there are any questions from the Board and then open it up.
I guess I have a question.
Carolyn has suggested that I see if the Board has any questions. So. Sam.
Yeah, so when you, can you access, if there's a problem in the middle of the night, can the people in the apartment deal with the problem? Can they, can they, do they have access to the basement?
Do they have access to the what, please?
To the, to the basement where, where all of your, where all of your panels are and all that stuff.
Yes, they do. There's, there's an entrance to the basement in the front hallway of the main house.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes, my, my main question is just the, you know, it really seems like the driveway is getting a lot closer to the other houses. So I'm just wondering how you're handling any kind of screening. Looks like the driveway is going to be three feet off the property line. Close condition. So, you know, I don't know what that other house looks like, but are there any provisions for screening along that property line?
What we're planning is some ground cover. I think that can be of varying height here. I think we have room to put some plants that would provide a screen to answer your question. So I, I think we're going to have enough of a buffer from the edge of the pavement to the edge of the property where we could accommodate that. That, that's what's listed here in the site plan is, that's the intention.
So the, this shaded line, that, those are plantings?
Yes, right. All along here. Yeah.
Okay. Have you had any contact with the, with the neighbors? Any, any concerns from them that you, I mean, we'll hear if they're here and they have concerns. But have, have you heard of any?
I have not. And I have talked to all of them. I've discussed the site plans with them and walked them around the property and kind of kept them fully aware as the project has progressed.
Okay, all right.
I will add, there was one abutter who just sort of noted that they were concerned about the sort of loss of their view into the backyard, but understood that, you know, they couldn't protect that. That's in the record. That's in the file, public file cabinet. But I just, since you were asking about other abutters, that is in the record.
Right, yes. Any other questions right now from the, anybody on the, on the Planning Board? Okay, so with that, now do I need a motion to open public comment on this agenda item? Or do I just open? Carolyn?
Just open.
No, you can just, you can just open right away.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so with that, is there, can we go back to the gal, the Brady Bunch view for the moment? I'm a host, I guess I could do that.
Yeah, I can stop the screen share too, I think.
Stop, is that mine?
Yes, please.
We can put it back up if, if. If we need to.
Okay.
You need to just hit the stop share.
Got it. Get there.
You see where it says you're viewing Michael's screen? There should be a stop button there.
Not what, what I'm looking at.
Here, I got it.
Okay.
Oh, here we go. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Anybody, anybody here to speak on this agenda item? If you can turn your video on and wave your hand if, or you can also use the hand icon on the participant list. So I'm not seeing any, I'm not seeing anybody. So Carolyn, if we can, can hear from, from, from you. We have some notes in the.
Yeah, so there were just.
I see a hand.
A few comments.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, yeah, let me address this. I didn't, I didn't see. So Mary Scanlon Flynn, I see a hand.
Okay, I don't look much like a Mary.
I'm Mary.
But she does. I, I, I buy it.
We just, we just wanted to ask about potential runoff from the, from the driveway that abuts our property.
And are you the?
We're the, we're the small house that car number six in the driveway comes along beside our patio.
Okay, well, and then briefly, I didn't ask you. I should have asked you when I recognized you. If you could just state your names and, and your address for the record.
Oh, sure. I'm Mary Scanlon Flynn and I live at 83 Parsons Street.
Okay. All right, and so your question was, so back to Mr. Fisher.
You're asking about whether or not there's a risk of runoff from the driveway onto your property.
Yeah, yeah.
And what I would say to that is, I believe that the, the grading plan of the driveway is such that it does not run in the direction of your property or the other property that's abutting the driveway. And if there was any risk of that, I would make provisions to alter the grading so it wouldn't put it at risk.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take care to make sure that that's not a concern.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Before I go back.
I will, on that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, on that same note, Department of Public Works noted that for erosion control, which relates to drainage and runoff during construction, that erosion control measures should be established at the property boundaries so that during construction, if there is runoff before the final grades are set, that that will be captured at the edge of the property. So you could certainly include that as a condition that, that erosion control measures should be installed at the property boundaries prior to construction.
Yeah, I saw that in that memorandum. I'll make absolutely sure that that is, that is, that is done.
The other comments are DPW just related to the cemetery fence. So I think it, it could be included as a permit condition, but it's sort of standard practice that of course, if any damage to cemetery fence during construction shall be repaired by the applicant. And that they had, they had a question about potential impact to the trees on the property. There's not, there's no construction proposed in and around trees, but that the Board might want to consider that staging and equipment not be allowed to be within the critical root zone of those trees.
Yeah, and that's, and that's fine with me. I, I don't think that it's going to be an issue, given the proximity of the trees, but we'll make sure to take that into consideration. You know, and act accordingly.
Any, any further comment from the public? Anybody? So with that, so with that, is there anybody on the? So before I close public comment on this, any, anything else from the Board to ask of the applicant or anything like that? Um, okay, so hearing then, if I can have a motion to close public comment on this agenda item?
Move to close public comment.
Second. Second. Okay, so.
Is that Chris?
Yeah, it was Chris. So, so I will call, I'll call the, the long, long roll. So Sam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we'll close public comment with that. So just moving on, do, so I'd ask of the Board, do we, do we want to make those couple of things a condition? I, I think certainly the fence doesn't strike me as something that isn't, is, needs to be a condition because it's, it's clearly would be the responsibility. But the, the tree staging could be, you know, worth enforcing. They're, they're, you know, the applicant's clear, good intentions. We have closed, I'm sorry, Ms. Young. Closed. Yeah, sorry, I, I would have called on you. I mean, we can reopen, but if it, unless it's something significant. Okay. Um. So anybody, so I, I think I would move toward, I would be inclined to include the condition about the staging and protecting the tree. I certainly am, see the good intention here and trust that they would do that anyway. But it's always worth import, you know, holding folks to their good intentions. Any, anybody else? David, Chris, Sam? Okay. David, Chris, Sam? Okay, so hearing no further comment from the board, can I have a motion to approve the, approve the site plan with the condition about staging and tree protection? Anybody?
Yes, actually, we could add we could add a condition for the grading that they discussed with the neighbor.
Okay, yeah, I think that seems fair.
I understand.
Like, that we approve this application before us with the following conditions, that tree protection be provided during construction, that the driveway be graded to direct stormwater runoff away from abutting properties. And I'd also like to add that erosion control measures be set up during construction as well.
Oh, good catch. Carolyn did also mention that. Do I have a second for that? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. So Sam, have you vote?
Yes.
David Whitehill?
Yes.
Chris?
Hey?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Looks like a nice project. I'm glad, and always glad to see people build an additional housing so close to town. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
We're only 23 minutes behind, so I'll go ahead and call the 720 agenda item, which is a site plan by Peter and Sarah Flinker to create a second unit at 502 Haydenville Road in Leeds. Who do we have to speak on that?
Hello, I'm Peter Flinker.
Oh, hi. And we'll let you share your screen.
Okay.
Whoever's in charge of that, I think that's.
Yep, I could do that. Sorry. Okay, should be good to go.
All right. Let me find the right, I'm going to start with the overview. Can you see my screen? So this is just the location of the site. This is on Haydenville Road, which is Route 9, toward, sort of past, we're part of Leeds, but we're kind of in between Leeds and Haydenville. So this is, you've got St. Mary's Cemetery, and then you have one neighbor, and then you have our house, and then you have the electric company. Then behind us and across the street is all city land, the Beaverbrook Greenway. So if you see the lower image, this is all an entirely existing structure. So this is a house from about 1870. It was for a big house, little house, backhouse barn configuration. And the barn fell down in the snow in 2007. And we decided to rebuild the barn, and then we decided to make that the, kind of the new residence or the new central part of the house. So we moved into the barn in 2015 after eight years of construction. And then the idea was always to turn the older part of the house in the front into an apartment. And then in the meanwhile, one of our oldest daughter continues to live in the front part of the house, and my wife and I live in the back in the new addition. Anyway, so we're asking for permission under the new two-family bylaw, which allows for two-family units in this district to divide this officially into two units. So that's the, I'll show you the photographs. It's probably easiest way to understand it. So this is from the street, the bottom view shows the existing older house, and the barn is basically on the footprint. We call it the barn. It's the, the main unit now. It's on the footprint of the original barn, and you could see in the upper house, the upper photograph, the original house, and then the barn, which the original barn was set into a hill, and so we kept that so that the bottom is kind of a walkout basement in the lower level, and then we have two floors above that. So essentially, we're keeping everything as is. We're just, again, asking permission to officially have an apartment in the front unit. And what that really means is putting in a kitchen, because the building department, when we built the new unit in the back, they required us to eliminate the kitchen from the front, which had been there. And so we basically have been sharing the kitchen in the new house, and then the idea is to have a new kitchen in the front. So there's existing parking for, at least four cars as required. What you can see here is the two cars that are sort of parked in the back part, and then these are the two spaces that are in the, the front. So the sort of two pullouts where we commonly park, as well as a garage where we could park if it wasn't full of stuff. And someday might, might be available for parking. It's my dream. And then the front part of the house, basically existing house. And then this is the view to the north. So a part of this, we put in new mini splits to replace an old oil burner. And that's going to be screened behind fencing ultimately. And it already is pretty much invisible from the street. So the site plan, which you have, basically, we have Haydenville Road. We have the existing driveway, the front unit, which is two stories and one and a half stories, and a shed. And then the back unit, which is two and a half stories. And then, as I said, two parking spaces next to the the old house, and then two parking spaces off the driveway. And that's pretty much the story.
All right, very good. And, and congratulations. I think this is our first application on the two-family by right, isn't it?
Yep.
Anybody on the, any, I'll go first to the planning board. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? No, no. All right.
My opinion.
Do what?
I said, this is the most straightforward thing I've ever seen, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's, it is pretty straightforward. Oh, also, I will go back and tag back something that I should have said earlier. This agenda item and the previous agenda item were, and all the future agenda items for the, the night are, we're posting the Gazette on April 29th and May 6th. So just want to cover my base. I may say it again, just to make sure, but that this is, this was posted. So with that, I would open it up and see if anybody in the, in the public here has any comment about this about this applicant, application. All right, very, seems, seems, seems all quiet. So I, I guess I will, I'm going to start, I'm not going to, I'm going to close everything all at once, just in case anybody pops up with a question. So, so I'll ask the planning board one more time. Oh, and Carolyn, sorry, Carolyn, we want to hear from Carolyn.
Um, yeah, I mean, there were no comments from DPW, so I don't really have any additional, I mean, this is a very straightforward permit application, you know, reusing the existing space. It definitely fits within the you know, it's one of the ways that the two-family by right was envisioned to be utilized using existing buildings and, and reconfiguring the interior space. Of course, also additions are part of that as well. But given that there's no footprint expansion and it's all interior reorganization, I think that makes it that much simpler.
All right, very good. So I will ask one more time if there's any comment from the board or the public. Okay, so seeing, seeing none, do I have a motion to, to close public comment?
So moved.
I think David, second, anybody? There's only three of you that can do this, so I really need you all to step up. All right, thanks. I, Chris seconded that. So with that, I will go in a different order. So Chris?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And I also concur. So of course, that, I've asked a few times now, so I'm going to speak now forever, hold your peace from the board, if anybody has any further comment. And if, so if they don't, if somebody could make a motion to.
I move to close public comment.
But we just did that, Sam. So now I need a motion to approve the plan.
Approve the plan, that's what I meant.
Okay. Wait a second. Okay, so Sam moved, Chris seconded. Chris, Chris beat you to it. Chris seconded. Okay, so, so motion to approve the site plan, no added conditions. Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
And I also concur. Yes. Congratulations to the inaugural two-family by right site plan approval.
Thank you very much.
Very good. 7:50, we do not have.
I am just going to see if I can take one more moment to connect with Melissa to see if she could pop in by any small chance.
All right. Well, the next thing isn't until, we have caught up in time almost entirely, and the next agenda item is until 8:10, so we have a, a couple of minutes. So we will try and see if we can make this quorum happen.
Yeah, we also can do other items, if you just give me one second. Let's see. Um, okay, so why don't we do the other items for the moment while I see if I can get in touch with Melissa?
So by other items, you mean the A and Rs?
Yes, and the minutes.
Okay.
So let me pull those up. Let's see. Okay. So, um, I thought I had one of these up here, but let's just go. Okay, the first one I'll pull up is Kennedy Road, and this is just a land purchase, essentially. So there's no new lot being created. I'm going to share my screen and show you this. Oh, did it show up? Are you seeing the plan on the screen?
Yep.
Or no?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So this is on Kennedy Road. I'm just gonna, I'm having a problem with my cursor here. Okay. And there's a, just a small, a 15,000 square foot portion of this very large, you know, five plus acre lot. So there'll be a land transfer of this rectangle from this property on parcel 11 to 2. So because it's a change of land within a parcel, that's what triggers the approval not required request for endorsement by the planning board. It's noted that this is not considered a building lot, and it's really just going to be swapped from one property owner to the other. So I just need approval, vote on endorsing this as an A and R plan.
Move to endorse the A and R on Kennedy Road.
Second.
All right. So that was moved by Sam and seconded by Chris. So Chris, how do you vote on this thing?
Yes, approve.
Yeah. Endorse, we endorse. David, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Sam? And, and I also, because I must, vote yes.
Yeah.
I will always know, and I must vote, yes.
Okay, um, let's see. I am looking for, the next one here is on Baker Hill Road. Let's see. Okay. And let me just pull up the A and R. Okay, I'm going to zoom out the screen a little bit. Okay, so, um, this is, this is, I'm going to zoom out a little bit on this screen so you can get sort of the bigger picture. But there are some lots at the very top of Baker Hill Road that went originally approved, the frontage that was created actually went down the backside of the hill to Riverside Drive. And so that's what these flagpoles are in this, in this plan here, these 50-foot wide flagpoles that went down to Riverside Drive, and those created the frontage for all the lots surrounding this what was initially approved through special permitting and site plan back in the 80s, I think it was, for a lot, these large lots at the top of Baker Hill. About five years ago, I think it was 20, I can't remember what year we're in, it was about four or five years ago. There was a petition for the city to accept this section of Baker Hill Road. It was only a public street, a certain part of the way up Baker Hill Road, and about four years ago, the petition was put forward to the city to accept this whole rest of Baker Hill Road where there's this turnaround. And so in doing that, the city did vote, city council voted to accept this portion of Baker Hill Road, and so the whole length of Baker Hill Road is now a public street. The city accepted that, and by doing that, that creates frontage along Baker Hill Road for all of these lots, which makes all of these flagpoles unnecessary going forward, because the frontage can now officially be taken from a city-accepted street frontage of Baker Hill Road. So what this applicant is doing, the lot is over here, and their flagpole stretched across or under what was previously just a driveway. And so they're going to essentially cut off the flagpole that went down to Riverside Drive and then sell the flagpole to the abutting property owner, because they no longer need the flagpole for frontage. So that's what this A and R is about.
People are so creative.
And why, why are they doing all that?
Um, well, if you can imagine, you're, you know, you're, part of your lot is across the street and runs between two other property owners' lots all the way down to Riverside Drive. That makes it pretty difficult for maintenance. You are obligated as the property owner to maintain this whole stretch of lot that goes all the way down. So it makes it, it simplifies the plan. That makes it easy for everybody to read and look at, but also in terms of maintenance for that portion of the property.
You don't want to shovel 50 feet of sidewalk on Riverside Drive.
So I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. This is actually an 11,000 or almost 12,000 square foot parcel near the intersection of Elm and Main Streets, the backside of the Smith-Vogue Farm Field where the Apple Orchard is. It's where the Family Services, is that what you call it? Is located, and the city is going to carve off this parcel for the purposes of the nonprofit entity that occupies this house. So essentially just surplusing this parcel so that then they can formally hand it over, so they have a full, you know, deed as opposed to a lease to this building by the city. So it does create a new lot, but no new structures are planned because the structure is already there.
All right, any questions from the board? Okay, um, so do I hear a motion to accept this A and R on, or endorse A and R on 593 Elm Street?
I move to endorse the A and R on 590, 593 Elm Street.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, so Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
David? I think I heard him say yes, and Sam?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I also vote to endorse.
Okay, so unfortunately, I have not heard back from Melissa, so, which means she's probably deep in healthcare world right now. So just to reiterate for everyone here, and including the planning board members, I think we've had a technical difficulty with George being able to call in to the meeting. I thought we had a quorum for the 750. The issue is, the 750 item is a special permit, which requires five unanimous, or five votes positive to approve a special permit. That's a super majority of the seven, and that's required by state statute. Site plan approvals only require four votes, which is why you could continue with the other items on your agenda. We don't have five people at the moment, which means that we'd have to continue the hearing to May 27, I think is the next possible hearing date, May 27. And so far, I don't see why we would have a problem. There was just sort of a confluence of bad events that happened in the last week or so. So I'm, you know, it was something that was, you know, not
It's so unusual in this moment that we, that we, people are away. It's a, it's a return to a quorum juggling that, of another era, I think.
Right.
Can I ask, Carolyn, I am assuming we can't, we can't sort of leave it and see if, if we get that fifth person and move it to the end, it just has to be continued at this point if we don't have the quorum? Yeah, I mean, if the applicant cares to do that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly no, there's no harm. You could sort of continue it till the last item, so you could start by, so that the, we have two other items, one scheduled for 8:10 and one scheduled for 8:30. So you, if, for instance, you could continue it till 8:40 or 8:45, and give a little bit more time to see if I can get a response. I'm not necessarily hopeful, because the one issue, I know that there were, you know, there's, there's a health issue and so I don't want to assume that that's gonna happen. You certainly have the prerogative to do that if the applicant wants to do that, or you can just go ahead and continue it to May 27. We actually have an open agenda for that meeting, so you could put them right up at 7:00 PM, and there's nothing that would come before them, they could come, you know, be right up first off on the agenda.
So Mr. Broadbent? I'm sorry, I know you, you've been here. It's okay to ask, right, Carolyn?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Sorry, you know, I'm the, the open, open meeting law, I really am trying to make sure I don't run afoul. So Mr. Broadbent, as you can hear, it, it's not looking promising that we're gonna get that quorum, but I, you know, I, I'm guessing we wouldn't have an objection to waiting. I mean, we can't wait, we have to proceed, but with you waiting and seeing, but it, I, it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound promising. And I will, to the extent that we've asked this other planning board meeting to get on if she can, given the circumstances, I think I, I would prefer that we not ask her to do that unless she, you know, just really is able to, but, but we would, you are on the agenda, and so I would ask, I would ask you if you would like to try and wait or not.
Okay, thank you. I'm in by Barantia currently, and I'm here with my wife, Susie McCray, and our site planner, Jeff Squire from Berkshire Design Group. I, I think one of us will hang in and just wait off, off camera and muted, just to see. It's, we have everything queued up, we were delayed once, and so, you know, maybe good things will happen. So thank you for your consideration on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, and again, we, we do apologize, it's, it is a, like I said, a throwback to a different time, where people are actually being out of town, and there's some health considerations, and I think we have a member who's taking, maybe in the middle of exams and things like that. So, so I appreciate your patience, and notwithstanding my pessimism, yeah, Chris?
Um, should we just ask if there's anyone, anyone else from the public who wants to speak on that project? And just to let them know that we might be hanging out, I mean, I guess they're hearing it, but just so they know.
I, I think they're hearing this conversation, so if they're looking to speak, that, that they're looking to speak or hear on it, then they, at their, at their peril, I guess, of their, of their time, are certainly free to, to hang out and wait. Okay, so with that, well, when do we go to the next? Oh, so 8:10, oh, so it's 8:10, it's 8:10 now, it's 8:11. So we will go to the 8:10 agenda item, so this, which is a site plan for the second curb cut at 415 North Farms Road in Florence. And we have the Macklers here, I think.
You have Fred and Sue Mackler here.
Yeah.
And also Robert Volenger has a public comment when I get a minute to speak.
All right, very good. We will open up public comment after the presence, the presentation.
I'm asking for a curb cut in a spot where there never was a curb, so it's kind of an odd request. For well over 100 years, the Volenger family farmed hayfields that we now own, and they gained access to it directly on North Farms Road. Our home has frontage on the north side and on the south edge of our property. Our driveway is on the north side, and the south side edge is where the farm equipment has always accessed the field. We've lived there for nearly 36 years, and Bob Volenger and his father John before that have always hated this field. And now North Arms Road was repaved, which it barely needed, and in the process, a curb was placed there, which makes it very difficult or impossible for Bob to bring his equipment in, which he does maybe six times a year. You want to see a screenshot of the plot? You should be able to bring it up.
Ah, yes, please.
Just to get permission.
Right.
Uh, no.
Did you?
If you're
Who is trying to share?
Macklers.
Yeah. So I did give you permissions. If you're having trouble sharing, I can also, I pulled up your plans on my screen, I'd be happy to put it up.
Thank you.
If that works.
Thanks.
Okay. Can you see that? Let's just
Yep.
So this is the area of the curb cut.
Yes.
The existing driveway is here, and the existing home is here. I'm just gonna zoom out a little bit. Okay. So I don't, so the issue here is that a second curb cut requires a site plan approval by the planning board. Again, it's a simple majority approval, but there's the requirement, regardless of whether there were never curbs on North Farms Road, the city made an investment to rebuild North Farms Road, and at that time, created curbs for specific drainage to go certain locations. And curb openings are granted one per property unless special permission is granted by the planning board, and the standard is that the curb, that more than one curb cut can be granted if it is improves the safety within the network, essentially. The site plan review criteria is that that there's something unique about the property that would otherwise render flow to and from the property unsafe and unmanageable, and if the board finds that more than one curb cut is necessary for traffic safety purposes. And additional site mitigation may also be incorporated as part of the planning board's review. Well, I guess if a hay wagon tipped over trying to negotiate this high curb, that would create a traffic hazard, and we could maybe qualify to the traffic and safety clause.
And me entering and having to slow down, not being able to enter the field, like I used to be able slowing down approach and climb up over the curb is gonna be blocking traffic a lot longer.
Um, a question that I have is that when the city went in and out of these curves were, I mean, is there any process for for property owners to weigh in or ask at, at that time? Sort, you know, sort of notice that they might need to ask for a permit at that time before the curbs go in? Because now, I mean, like, it's one thing to be like, design it in the curb cut, it's another thing to, and this is a question for Carolyn, so if you, it's another thing to, having now had, put it in to now, you know, kind of tear up the road and, 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 and undo some of the work that was done. So that's, I think, a question for Carolyn. If you know.
I don't know the specific process. I do know that, you know, where there are, where there are driveways and access points for homes, that's where the curb openings are created. So given this is a, you know, not a situation that is used very infrequently, it's not surprising to me that during the construction phase that, that DPW didn't plan to create an extra curb, because in, at that point, it's considered an extra opening. It's right by a wetland, there's an electric utility pole, they were planning drainage there, there's a catch basin. So there certainly wouldn't have been a reason for DPW to to be able to, to know that they would, should consider a curb opening in that location.
But no, sort of automatic notice, because my question is, or I guess my thinking is, is like, it's not, certainly not the case that they would be like, oh, you just want another curb cut, so we'll design it in. That wasn't, but, but to make their application at that time before, before the curb.
If I can wait, David Arbyman with Rachel Nace Smith.
Well, hold on just a second. I want to make sure that the board, that there aren't any other questions by the board, and then you maybe
Yeah, we'll come back to you in just one second.
Sure.
Anybody else from the
Is there any documentation of sort of the pattern of use of this space prior to 2000? What year was the repaving, 2020?
Yeah, it was 2020. The only documentation of use is that we are a registered farm, and that was always the access, and never would we have imagined that a curb would be put in there. There are several properties on North Farms Road where there was a second access point for farm equipment, and no curb was put in to block their second access. So, and, and no, we were not asked beforehand, so it was a very big surprise to us that a curb was put there.
So can I ask, the equipment that has to go in there, I mean, tractors, I would guess could generally could navigate a curb pretty well? Is there, is there something I'm not understanding about this particular equipment, or?
Bobby Volenger is the person who finds it for us.
I'll speak on that. So previously, before this curb, there used to be just a little berm of about two and a half, three inches of dirt, where the water did not go in. By raising that curb six inches, you now put another berm behind that, the dirt built up behind that berm, to hold the berm back that comes back. So now there's a lot steeper grade coming down off of the road into the field, and the grade was so steep coming into the field before, prior to that six-inch berm being installed, that coming in and out, I dragged the hitch of my baling and other pieces of equipment coming in and out of there. This spring, the fertilizer spreader that I usually rent to fertilize my hayfields, I was unable to even enter into the field, because I knew it would drag going into the field and drag coming out of the field. So I had to use a special three-point hitch fertilizer spreader that I could pick up, and only put it about 400 pounds in at a time, and the field took 1,500 pounds of fertilizer. So that took me a lot more time coming in and out of that field, and it's just a lot more aggravation with that curb cut. And just one other thing I'd like to mention about curb cuts, in, up the street from me, a house number four
I'll speak on that. So previously before this curb, there used to be just a little berm of about two and a half, three inches of dirt. Where the water did not go in by raising that curb six inches. You now put another berm behind that to, of dirt built up behind that burn to hold the burn back that comes back. So now there's a lot steeper grade coming down off of the road into the field. And the grade was so steep coming into the field before, prior to that six inch burn being installed. That coming in and out, I dragged the hitch of my baling and other pieces of equipment coming in and out of there. This spring, the fertilizer spreader that I usually rent to fertilize my hayfields, I was unable to even enter into the field because I knew it would drag going into the field and drag coming out of the field. So I had to use a special three-point hitch fertilizer spreader that I could pick up. And only put it about 400 pounds in at a time and the field took 1,500 pounds of fertilizer. So that took me a lot more time coming in and out of that field. And it's just a lot more aggravation with that curb cut. And just one other thing I'd like to mention about curb cuts in um, up the street from me, a house number four 80. There was a section of curb that they had that was put in on North Farms Road. And two days later, it was removed because they wanted the people park their car on their lawn. And they already have one curb cut as an access, but there, there was probably about a 14 foot section of curbing that was removed for them that they only have, I don't think they have two acres of land and they already have a curb cut. I don't know how they got their section of curbing removed so quickly.
Uh, yeah, right. Well, it's hard to speak to that. Um, can I ask, is there, uh, is there access from the parcel to the north? Are there other areas to enter from?
So if I entered down Fred's driveway, he has a driveway where the water comes down his driveway, comes from his driveway into the field. So the water runoff, I can't go down and enter from on the edge of the field because the water from his driveway runs onto the edge of the field and my heavy equipment sinks in and makes ruts in the field. I don't pay closer to his driveway. Because I can't because the water runoff from his driveway, so I can't access through his driveway property.
I, I think, I think Marissa is asking about from the north part of your parcel.
From the north part of my parcel?
No, it's the north. That's where the driveway that he's talking about is.
The driveway that I'm talking about. If I, I can't access through, I could go down his driveway, but when I come off of his driveway into the field, the runoff from the water from the driveway, when it rains is too, it, it, you know, like, just like a road runs off blacktop and into the field there. And when I go in with my heavy equipment, I sink out of sight, create ruts and make a mess.
Okay.
That's why we've always come in from the other parcel.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the board right now? Okay.
A hypothetical for Carolyn. If they, if they did an A and R for that rectangle or for that square piece, would that get them a curb cut by right?
Um, they can't do an A and R because they don't have enough uh, frontage for that. This area requires 175 feet of frontage. They are actually have been contemplating creating a flag lot or two flag lots. But using the existing driveway as a shared driveway to a second proposed lot. And that's because they don't have 175 feet of clear frontage for each parcel. And in fact, this, the city would not likely approve any kind of driveway there. So certainly using six times a year for agricultural purposes to run a tractor through this area would, could continue, but formalizing a driveway um, and through a cut, the driveway itself would not be allowed to be constructed, only a curb opening. Because the wetlands and perennial stream are right there.
Are there any restrictions that you know of off of the driveway by the property where this runoff is, where the property owners couldn't improve that area in some way to um, allow for tractor access from their garage, I mean, from their garage, from their parking, uh, from their driveway, I'll come up with a word eventually, from their driveway, you know, by, by improving drainage or uh, anything like that. Is there any restriction because of the wetlands that I, this is a question for Carolyn first and then I'll, I'll ask the applicant.
So at the end of the existing driveway that goes to the house, are there any wetlands restriction?
Yeah, that you know of, if, if you do.
Not, not that have been flagged, so I don't know. It could very well just be that there's soil saturation and it's just wet because of the grade and the drainage. I don't know.
So, so then I would ask the applicant that question. Is there any reason why you, you couldn't improve your, your property from, from that point to create an access point for the?
I don't think it can be done.
It's a very steep driveway down. And it, the runoff is into the field, but it isn't wetlands there. So at the bottom of the driveway, all the water from the driveway from North Farms is going down into the bottom, into the field.
And also the, sorry. Also the incline from the driveway that they have going down into the field where I would be accessing is a lot steeper than where I would be entering from the lower section on North Farm Road. I would run into the same problem dragging hitch of the baler and equipment up that steeper hill. And it being, it's, it's just soil. So going up a hill when it's wet, if I start sinking in or slipping with the tractor, I'm spinning and I'm, I'm creating ruts.
Sure. Um, okay, any, any, uh, for the moment, last questions, uh, from the planning board? Okay. So hearing none, I will hear public comment. So I come back to, uh, so if you can state your name and your address for the record, please.
Okay.
That's David and Rachel that I see.
Uh, David Arbaitman, Amit and Rachel Naysmith, 357 North Farms Road. So, um, our property is right next to, our house is right next to where the proposed curb cut is. And I should say that over the years, um, you know, tractors have gone up there. It's never created a problem for us. And I understand the concerns that are being raised. You know, we, we would have absolutely no objection to a curb cut there as long as it was just for agricultural purposes. I understand that they're contemplating building some houses up there and want to make sure that no can destruction of, in, you know, in that, through that curb cut. That's my comment.
Um, anybody else? Uh, oh, Mr. Downey Meyer.
Yeah, Downey Meyer, yep, Downey Meyer, 516 North Farms Road. Uh, just to address your earlier comment, um, there was no notice process as to curb cuts. Uh, I walk, I've lived at 516 North Farms Road, uh, which is about a half mile up the hill from this property. Since 2005, I walk this road virtually every day. The curbs are completely haphazard as to how they're put in. In some places, it seems, uh, I was also for eight years on the North Tampa Conservation Commission. So as this was built out, I was looking at it from a wetlands perspective. There's actually 200 meters of the east side of the road above the Arbaitman driveway um, that has no curbs whatsoever. So the, i- if the rationale here is that we're somehow preventing siltation, which is one of the things in the city ordinance. There's actually quite a bit of gravel that's been mobilized on the eastern part where the city did not finish the job properly. That's ending up in the storm sewer. Um, I've also noted and thought about calling Sarah LaValley during the winter season, um, quite a bit of silt that's flowed out of unstabilized dirt that was not properly seeded and loaned. Um, so, so there really was no process and, and, and some parts of, you know, some parts that's been left out, some parts that's been included. The, the other thing is, you know, just to follow up with what Mr. Volenger said about again, some curb cuts were preserved. Uh, so my neighbor has four curb cuts, um, and those were preserved. And again, other, other people had curb cuts restored after they were put in. So from, you know, from my perspective as someone who walks the road every day, the agricultural use of the road is actually a traffic, you know, traffic calming. The equipment moving up and down the road, uh, people slowly, you know, people slow down if there's more activity. Again, as a, as a person who's been on the Wetlands Commission, uh, if you look at the properties, the Mackler property, one of the things is you're within 200 feet of the perennial stream there and you're within, you know, you're pretty close to the, the BVW boundary. So again, to, to say that you could do some improvements on the Mackler property. Again, I think raises, raises questions about the impact on wetlands at that end. As far as, you know, looking, looking at the grades, um, where the previous curb cut, you know, curb cut was, it was built up quite a bit. And again, one of the things I've noticed is that there was probably a two to three foot wide gravel strip put on the outside of the curb at this point. That gravel is going to end up in the brook at a certain point because it's not stabilized at all. So I, I, I think of this as being something that would really have a minimal impact. It could be done with a, a low, uh, low curb that again would allow Bob to exit and enter the, the property when he needed to do the work that he does. Um, and again, I, you know, these are, these are two people who've been extraordinarily sensitive to the, the agricultural property. The Macklers undertook a good deal of wetlands, um, yet restoration and evasives control on their property a number of years ago. So I would have as a, you know, resident, um, full confidence that they would do this in a way that would be sensitive to the adjacent stream and that they would maintain it in a way that would make it work for agriculture and would again, not provide, you know, any kind of hazard to traffic on this road.
It seems like, I, I mean, I'm more concerned, I mean, as long as it, it sounds like there's some unevenness here and, and making it so that they can get the tractor, their, their equipment in makes sense. I just don't know how to, how to do that. And make sure that it can't be used for future development.
Well, you certainly could condition a permit that states that they're allowed to do, to create an opening in accordance with DPW standards and DPW did give some uh, comments about the lack of detail and, and that would be needed to create such a thing. But as one of the other public comments, um, there, um, that you heard, you could condition the permit to say this curb opening is only for access for agricultural vehicles for the purposes of, um, farming the property. Um, and no other improvements are permitted as part of the permit, uh, as part of that um, allowance for the curb opening. So it's strictly just an opening and no other grading or pavement or any other kind of change to that, um, surface can be done without coming back to the planning board. But you know, that's even besides what kind of permits might be triggered by the Conservation Commission and the Wetlands Protection Act.
Is that?
For any of those type of improvements.
Can I, can I ask the applicants what they think of that idea?
That's fine. Um, we have no intention of putting a driveway there, um, for any other purpose other than to let the farm be farmed. Um, we are planning to have a shared driveway at the far end, but that is, that has nothing to do with this end. This is just a coincidence of timing that both that items are being discussed at the same time.
You'll see us again in the future because our son is hoping to build a house. We have 30 acres and somehow we're trying to find room for one more building lot.
Well, I'm excited.
It'll be the other end and it'll be coming off our driveway at the north end and it'll be in, in back of our house essentially. So we have no plans for the south end except winning the farm equipment in.
All right. Great. Well, keep that son away from you. It's too close.
Yeah.
He has, he has a son, so I have a grandson. There's the real reason.
Right. Um, any, uh, further comment from the, um, uh, Chris?
Well, I, I want to start out by saying, um, I really feel for you guys. You know, you're farming your land and then all of a sudden a curb gets put in where there never was one. I completely understand your predicament here. Um, I am having a little bit of trouble with the lack of detail and in, so the one thing I'm worried about is they did put in the curb and there's a catch basin right there. So I can't tell if that's like a local depression in the road. And maybe that's my fault for not going out there and getting my eyes on it this week. So I apologize. But I'm just worried about, you know, this, the stormwater effects, especially that close to a, to a stream. So I just don't know if, you know, if the curb's there for a reason or not. And that could be why there's a curb on your section of road where maybe there's not curbs on other sections of road because that's part of the stormwater design for, for the road. Um, so I just feel like I don't quite have enough information to, uh, to act at this point.
So Carolyn.
So you, just to let you know about the DPW comments and let everybody know the applicant has seen these. DPW noted the same lack of detail and concern. You could certainly incorporate, uh, some of their comments as conditions. So they're requesting that the northern limit of the curb, um, opening be a minimum of five feet from the utility pole and 10 feet from a, a speed sign. Provide details about, um, how they're going to cut and remove the curb. And, um, you know, the, the angle at which the curb needs to be cut um, and protection of the catch basin during that period of construction. Um, and then some, a condition about grading, um, of the apron so that it rises along the existing curb alignment to maintain the gutter drainage. You could certainly incorporate that. And if for some reason they can't ma- match all of those, then they, and, and they, um, go to the, and DPW will require a trench permit and um, other oversight during this process. So if they can't meet those standards, then they could either come back for an amendment or maybe they have to, um, not have a curb opening there. So there, I mean, there's a way you can set parameters about how they do the curb opening. Along with the condition that it only be used for agricultural purposes.
I can tell you, this was not a spot where water ever collected prior to this curb being put because the drainage is such that it stays in the road or goes into the catch basin. In my opinion, the curbs that were put in were haphazard. We put in without any thought to where they're going to put them. Cause there's no reason to have a curb there based on the way the land sits, where the stream is and where the water flows. But you can, and the experts look at it and that's just my opinion, having lived there for 36 years.
Yes, prior, prior to this, like I've been saying, there was a lip there. And, you know, not to bring this up, but we're, we're worried about the water entering the, you know, off the runoff into that 15 foot straightaway that I'd like the section of curb removed, but yet along North Farm Road, I have 1,500 feet of other farm fields that the water comes on directly into my field and is washing my field out, but I, there's nothing I can do and, and that's a whole nother issue. I understand. But we're just, I was, it was stated that, you know, the 15 foot cutout, you know, letting water in there, but yet down the road, there's 1,500 feet of water runoff into my fields that eventually make it to Fitzgerald's Lake in the same aspect.
Maybe not a perennial stream in your field. I think there's, I think, I think there's definitely a way to do, uh, you know, a couple inch curb or something that you could work with DW to design the curb cut to make sure that not all of the water from North Farms Road is going into this new curb cut. And there's some still going to this catch basin that I guess they just put in. It seems like it's something that's not, uh, rocket science to figure out. So it seems kind of clear, uh, that this should be, to me at least, that should be allowed. I mean, the fact that it's not 175 seat, uh, feet for a frontage. If you look at the houses around, there's barely any houses that have lots with 175 foot frontage over there. So it seems like a totally arbitrary criteria. So it seems very clear that this was probably its own lot at some point in the past anyway. So um, I think the issues are going to be with cons comm. And I don't think we should try to be cons comm here and let them give these people, uh, their own trouble.
I, I completely concur with David.
Um, well, so I'm gonna, uh, does anybody else have any questions for the applicants at this point in time? Okay. So if I can have a motion to close, uh, a public hearing.
If we close public hearing?
All right. Thanks, Chris. Second, anybody?
Second.
Right. Um, so, uh, motion to close public hearing, uh, Chris.
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Uh, and David?
Yes.
And I also vote yes to close public hearing. Um, does anybody else have anything to? To add from the planning board? So, so, so my, go ahead, David.
I'm sorry, I'm having a real lag here. So I, I just think with regard to these conditions. Um, it seems like there's so much wetlands issues around here that it's, that's going to be the critical issue with what you can build here for any future thing. And, and honestly, if you can, honestly, if you could. Put a driveway here that goes to a house, they have thirty acres there. Why shouldn't they put a house? I don't understand why, given such a hassle about it. I mean, the wetlands issue needs to be figured out, but that's not our job.
Yep.
So what are? Carolyn, or is that part of public comment? You look like you have something to say, Carolyn, but maybe I'm.
Yeah, I mean, the question before you is just the curb opening. There is access for, there's no question that there's a path for another house lot. Even though that's not in front of you right now, it's just the driveway for that house lot can't be located within two hundred feet of the wetland. So driveway access has to be somewhere else. But that's not part of the discussion now. It's really more about. You know, defining whether or not you think it's appropriate to have a curb opening here for agricultural purposes as has been presented.
I, I move, I move to support. The allowance of a curb cut for agricultural reasons. And that they must take into consideration to DPW's comments. For the creation of said curb cut.
Well, I, so. I have a, I mean, a question of taking into consideration seems like not a pretty, a pretty mushy condition. Is there something firmer that we can say about that?
You, you know, the DPW is very specific. I don't know if you want to incorporate their.
I said DPW's text.
Okay, so make, make their, so not taken into consideration, but to make their.
Yeah, thank you.
Comments, if we can phrase it affirmatively. You know, it's what I do, it's what I do.
Yeah, all right, yes, that's. To. I, I moved to support the curb cut for agricultural use. That incorporates the. The text. And, and. Comments of the DPW.
As, as conditions.
Regarding the design. Yeah, okay.
Uh, do you hear us? Okay. All right. Um, so Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little torn, but I'm going to go with yes.
Congratulations.
You have a curb cut.
No.
Please use it wisely and protect, yeah, so you have, assuming you get a design. According to the conditions and.
You have a long conversation with DPW.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For Bobby, thanks. I'm sure he's still on.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, so it's now eight forty-five. Uh, okay, so we fell a little bit behind schedule, so we're going to go to the eight thirty. How we were doing so well and now we, still we fell behind. So eight thirty.
I just want to. I was just going to interject that I think we will have a quorum for the broadband hearing. So if we want to go ahead and move for this one, and then you can go to the other one. I just need a fifteen minute heads up.
Okay.
To Melissa.
Okay, I'm not sure how precisely we can give that, but we'll, we'll give it a try.
Right. Well, I'll figure it out. I'm just wanting to let you know that I think we can go forward with the hearings after the eight thirty item.
Okay. All right. So the eight thirty item is the site plan for shared driveway by new, applicant is the New Way Homes at two ninety-one Riverside Drive. In Florence. And who do we have here for Mr. Hansel? Anybody else for that?
Yeah, John Hansel New Way Homes, East Long Metal, Massachusetts. Here tonight for the shared driveway, but first I want to thank the board for its time. Seems like my meetings go a little bit longer the most. But I'm going to pass this on to Attorney O'Hara, who will do the presentation for me.
And so I am Ryan O'Hara of Bacon Wilson here on behalf of John Hansell New Way Homes. First Attorney Elkins, fine job stepping in as a chair this evening. I'm sure that's a hard to adjust to on the fly and I'll reiterate what John said, which is, uh, thank you all for your time. I know we tend to bring a little more drama with us than the ordinary application maybe, but I think we have a pretty straightforward thing for you tonight. Uh, if I could be given permission to share my screen, I'd be happy to put some, some plans in front of you.
Uh, you're ready.
Okay, great. Bear with me. It's pretty embarrassing, but I don't necessarily have the smoothest. Track record of actually using this thing, so. We should be looking at. A proposed plot plan that actually shows three driveways here. Is everybody seeing what I am? Or could one person confirm that? Okay, so. This is not what's before you tonight, but what I want to make clear is this plot plan here in front of you. Was a, an A and R plan that reflects what could be done on these properties as of right. Without ever coming before you. And what you'll see here is three different homes with three different driveways. One coming off of Riverside and two coming off in pretty close proximity to each other of Liberty Street. However, what we're here for tonight is an application for site plan review of a proposed shared driveway. And the initial plot plan for that, I'm showing you now. So as you'll see here. The access to all three of these properties has been relocated to come off of one curb cut on Liberty Street. Uh, that will lead to a common driveway that serves all three of these properties. But the final plot plan that's actually before you this evening is this updated, slightly updated. Plan where this third house down here was moved back from the Riverside Drive frontage. A significant amount so as to allow this maple tree over here. Uh, which is shared along the boundary of the abutting neighbor over here to be maintained instead of. Removed because where the house was originally proposed, even with. The shared driveway a little closer to the street would have had more impact on this tree, which although not depicted on this plan is over here. So just quickly orient the, the board to this plan. You do have Riverside Drive down here, Liberty Street going up here. Riverside Drive, as you know, is a pretty highly trafficked. Area. Actually, as you go down here, I just went over there and drove today. It comes around a corner, maybe a little further down, but. That then turns upwards and carries on. Uh, and the proposed driveway for this southern house, I think really is, is one of the major benefits that this shared driveway here operates. Because as you saw on this. I can't quite get to the tab over, but on the original plan, the as of right A and R. That driveway would have been located right here, which really does a, a couple things. One, it would probably necessarily kill this maple tree. Two, it would impact a pretty steep slope coming up from Riverside Drive. But three, and I think maybe most of interest in terms of the site plan review standards as impact vehicular safety, et cetera. Uh, it would have a, another curb cut coming right out into this kind of highly trafficked area of Riverside Drive. And especially what I thought when I was there today is any cars coming from this direction around that corner. They come pretty quick to where that driveway would have been located. So really, I think that removes a pretty, a possible vehicular safety concern here. The other thing it does is keeps all traffic from any of these houses coming in and out of one location. While maintaining the exact same sort of necessary proposed parking that there was. You'll also see that there are a number of proposed new trees on this plan. Any symbol marked here? That's a new tree. So there's about five, six, seven new trees that are being supposed to go in. This tree and these across the tree or on the frontage rather will be maintained. The only trees that exist now that are going to be. Ultimately have to be removed under this plan are these two maple trees along the northern boundary line. And the reason for that being that there's really nowhere that this house, which again could build absolutely of right. Could be placed that wouldn't result according to an arborist that was consulted. In those trees losing a critical amount of root mass. So. Mr. Hansel went to the arborist kind of over and over, asking if there's any way this could be done that would preserve those trees. There really isn't one. So I believe, and, and John can certainly speak to this himself if I'm wrong. That, uh, there will be some trees planted along that boundary as well to replace the lost maples once they are removed. In summary, I think that while I'm happy to answer any specific questions the board might have. This is a pretty straightforward case that really fits in with overwhelming goals that the city zoning. Has currently been moving towards and reducing impervious services in trying to have common access to multiple properties where possible. In streamlining the way that, you know, what communal resources can be used. Between properties that are close to one another. And really, I think this is a reflective of that. It is site plan review, which is not really. A discretionary function. You know, if there's any reasonable circumstances under which the board can approve the proposed site plan. Pretty much have to, and I think that this is exactly that. It addresses all these goals. It actually reduces the impact of a plan that otherwise could be done as of right. This is a builder here who's coming and trying to do. Something that minimizes the impact of what otherwise would be as of right development. You know, this, this hides in some ways. Driveways that otherwise would have been put right in the open. For instance, here. Where there could have otherwise been a driveway. Now there'll be some lawn, the existing tree will stay. This is a thoughtful, considerate plan that's being put forward in an effort to have these homes be as integrated. And as limited of a disruption to the neighborhood as they can be. And unless the board has specific questions, I'd, I'd close there. And I will stop sharing.
Hi, Melissa. Hope all is well. David, you have a question?
Uh, I'm saying hi to Melissa also.
Oh, sorry, okay. All right, uh, so before I, I go to public comment, any, any initial questions from the board to Attorney O'Hara?
I have a, a boring technical question.
I hope I can answer it.
As being the shared driveway provisions in the code. Carolyn can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I believe that a fifteen foot wide driveway is required. And then with twenty feet for, for the. Full by access and that should be twenty-five feet long. I can't really tell because it's not dimensioned on the plan. But from what I can tell, it looks like the driveway is less than fifteen feet wide. Because the, the easement itself for the driveway is fifteen feet and the driveway is. Not as wide as the easement. So I was just wondering if you could confirm the, the driveway dimensions themselves.
It's called out as. It is fifty, seven and a half feet on either side of the property one there.
The easement does, but the extent of the pavement less than the easement lines. So that would mean to believe that the.
Admittedly, I'm zooming in on, on this plan right now to try to do this calculation without a rule in front of me. I, I don't know that I can do it exactly. John, if you have any specific answer to this readily, given your familiarity with the plans, you're welcome to chime in here.
Well, we went through the plans quite a bit. Smith Associates, I'd be saw metal along with Carolyn did go over it and she made sure that we had the proper turnaround or the. Where you could put one car in. Everything there is, it should be right up to what it's supposed to be.
So if you look, there's a pull off, it gets wider. I'm sorry. There's a pull off within ten feet. Once you get off. I'm looking at the April seventh plan, so I don't know if that's different from the plan. Mr. O'Hara, that you had up on the screen. But there was, there's a widening within ten feet that opens up to twenty feet. And then, of course, what the, you only need one of those for the, for, to meet the standard. So it, the width of the driveway would need to meet the fifteen foot minimum. But that's what I'm seeing on the plan that was submitted.
So it's the width of the driveway easement should be fifteen feet, not the width of the driveway itself?
No, the width of the driveway itself, but I'm seeing an easement area that's wider than that on the plan I'm looking at. And maybe it's just hard because of the hatch marks that being, that are being used. But I see a dashed line beyond the fifteen foot width. But nevertheless, you know, it. You can certainly require that final plans clarify that it meet, is meeting the standards. I mean, it's a just. You know, these are very technical and it, they either meet it or they don't meet it. So they. The, any applicant, you know, proposing a shared driveway would have to build it according to the zoning. You couldn't. I suppose you could grant a waiver, but the only way you could do narrower is if you were officially granting something left.
Right, we, we can't sort of accidentally grant, uh, you know, because based on the plan being off.
Right, right, right. So if you didn't speak to it, it doesn't mean that you've waived it. They still need to meet that requirement.
Does that answer your question, Chris, or? Okay, go ahead, Dave. All right, it looked like Chris wasn't going to say anything and then he was and so, but are you good, Chris? Can you, can you give me a thumbs up or did you have another follow up?
I mean, I've, I've created and read a lot of plans in my lifetime and so I. I'm just not seeing a fifteen foot width. There, there's, there are very few. Requirements for this permit and that's one of them, so. That's my only comment.
All right, David?
Yeah, which with regard. To the tree. So, um, the, the, the tree, I think. The tree, the arborist report, that tree that you call a maple on the southwest corner, I believe it's called a tulip tree and the, uh, in the arborist report.
Yeah, for, for whatever reason.
Get the story straight.
It's technically, it's, it's a tulip.
The surveyor didn't know his.
No, he's.
The surveyor doesn't know they're trees. Yeah. So just, yeah, maybe just have that, you know, clarified. I want to talk about the, the trees on the, so I'm glad to see that you moved that over to a zero lot line just to, to save that. That, that makes a lot of sense. Um, the, uh, the north side though, can you talk about why you can't shift the house south to at least save one of those two trees on the north property one?
Yeah, I could talk better about that. I asked the arborist, he says, no matter what you do, because of the size of the trunk. Uh, the roots system there, he says, nothing you can do. And he said that the tree would have to be trimmed so much that it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't survive anything. Cause I did try everything in my power to save those two trees. Cause the last thing I want is to be cutting down a tree.
But again, I guess not to suggest that there's any desire to cut down trees, uh, Mr. Whitehill, but. It, it is a tree that's entirely on this property and.
I'm not, I'm not asking you about. I, I'm not asking about people's like true heart and their love for trees. I don't care about that, honestly. I just, I think we need a little bit more evidence that. Like a plan showing, like, here's the maximum I can shift the house south and, and show me why that's not enough to. Of them actually that wasn't a huge amount of space that you needed to add, actually.
I'm just trying to find the email right now that I, I, I did email my arborist today and I asked him, is there any possible way that I can move the house? And let me see if I can find it right now.
Yeah, and, and while you're looking for that, John, the, the point I was looking to make, Mr. Whitehill, isn't about people's true intentions or anything. It's about what you're actually being asked to do here in approving the shared driveway and what could be done as of right. And even independent of developing houses here, somebody could go cut this tree down as of right. And putting the houses in as of right, this tree would have to go down. The driveway location is. The driveway location is not what's driving the treatment of this tree. It's just the point I was going to make. And I, John, I believe will supplement with that, with that email.
Well, sure. I would add, if I can just briefly, though. I mean, we, we understand that. I mean, we, we understand that, that there are things that can be done of right. This hearing is also an opportunity where we, you know, hear from the community and hear from the butters. And if we can, it is, it is one of the few opportunities to at least discuss some of the concerns, whether or not we are at a place where a property owner can do something just by right. So we, we understand that, you know, just a few, and I, and we are well aware of the history of all this.
Just to say that the, the requested relief isn't, isn't what's causing it. That's all I meant to say.
And after you said the history of everything that's going on, trust me, I did everything in my power. I asked the arborist today if there was anything possible. And he says, John, I don't think so. It's possible with a foundation, just not enough room. And if anything, I would have liked to save those trees because of all the noise I've been getting lately, I just don't need it. And I would have done just about anything to be able to save those. So, like I said, I, I went through every hoop possible. And he says, no way. So.
Any other questions before I open it up to public comment? Anything for the board, for the applicants? Or the applicant and, and his representative? Okay, so hearing, nothing. I will open it up to public comment. If you could, if you would wish to speak, either hit your hand icon or turn your camera on. You'll, if you turn your camera on, you'll shift to the front of my page, and I won't have to look so hard for you. You can, so you can do the hand icon or turn your camera on and, and give me a wave. So that, do I see anybody? I, I'm not seeing any hand. Oh, there we go. Okay. I saw Jenna. And then you disappeared. Jenna Lanterman. So if you can say your name and your address for the record, please. Oh, but you're muted. So you need to mute, unmute.
Right. I got one of the two. You can see my face. You can't hear my voice. I'm Jenna Lanterman. I live at 283 Riverside Drive, so just across Liberty Street from this proposed shared driveway. And a couple of pieces of just local resident context I wanted to add. I appreciate Ryan O'Hara's mention of the traffic that is Riverside Drive, and that does extend to Liberty Street. So I appreciate not wanting to put a driveway on Riverside. But people do turn onto Liberty Street and tear up it, round the corner and hit the gas. We've, you know, we have kids who play outside, it gets a little dicey sometimes. And for whatever reason, the driveway that was, I think of it as Irene's, the driveway directly across from us, is also turnaround. So daily, we work from home now, we look out the window all the time, cars turn onto Liberty Street, turn around in that driveway to head back onto Riverside, perhaps because of the cutlery building and businesses, you know, people trying to find businesses located within it. So I'm nervous about adding two houses worth of cars to that spot. And I just wanted to offer that context. And I would encourage, I mean, I know it's too late, but if you hadn't come and looked at the property, that the canopy of trees is beautiful. I appreciate the attempt to save them. I wonder if a smaller house size might be a possibility for protecting the trees a bit better. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And see any other hands? Camera waving. Oh, Elizabeth Porto. You can turn your camera, camera on if you can, and unmute yourself.
I prefer not to turn my camera on. Is that acceptable?
Sure, sure. You can just state your name and your address for the, for the record, please.
My name is Elizabeth Porto, and I do live in the Bay State neighborhood. I'd prefer not to say where I live. Is that acceptable? Otherwise, I won't make a comment. For privacy reasons, I prefer not to say where I live.
Carolyn, do you know of any issue, why somebody must say their whole address?
I think, you know, certainly that's never been requested before. But I think the board can honor the request if someone's concerned about that. So yeah, I mean, if she wants, if you want to accept that as just the Bay State resident, you know, it's your
I actually have a problem with it. I mean, you're not, you're not identifying yourself by face, you're not identifying yourself by address, just some name. It's not, this is a public record. And I don't think it, it has a place.
Okay. All right. Then I won't comment. I have taught in the prison system, and I really don't want to make my address public.
I appreciate that.
Because I am a public, I mean, I, I really don't want certain certain student, former students to find me. So.
Okay. I appreciate that.
That's, that's certainly your prerogative. And, but I, I agree that we need to, to keep it a public record and, and know who, who, who is, who is here. Brian, I'm gonna say it wrong, Subak. So I'm yes, you, Brian. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, my name's Brian Subak. I live at 7 Lexington Ave, which is the opposite corner of the block that this, that's in question. I also own 10 Wood Avenue, which is the only house on the cut-through street between Lexington Ave and Liberty Street. So let me start by saying that the, the infiltration of, of new homes and the added traffic and cars that's, that's happening within our neighborhood has caused problems for me personally around my street. This developer built the house on Lexington, and four cars went with that house. There's four cars that house. So there's a room up in front of that house. They park around my house now. And it's a very quiet neighborhood where, you know, kids learn to ride bikes, and there's pets and things. And it's creating quite a hazard almost on a daily basis. So first of all, with the addition of two more houses, could be the addition of eight more cars to the neighborhood. But the point, I guess the point is the driveway, the curb cut or whatever it is, is, so potentially there could be eight cars coming in and out of that driveway that never were coming in and out of that driveway. And if, if anybody drives up Liberty Street at any time during the day, that's really the hub of the neighborhood where all the kids hang out and play baseball or soccer or wiffle ball. And adding that many cars to that neighborhood isn't a good idea, in my opinion. Also, I would, I would question, is there, was there only one arborist that was brought in on the question about the trees? And we're just going to go with that one arborist suggestion. Is there, you know, could there possibly be more people could talk about those trees? Maybe we could save those trees?
I, I would, just in, in the interest of, you know, it's not the that, we, we don't require applicants to, well, we don't require applicants to have like second opinions and third opinions and, and, and things like that. So I don't, I would just, I would just leave it at that, that that's not required by any thing that I understand about the application.
Could it be requested?
We can, we could talk about it as a condition. So we'll, we'll note that. But it, we, in order to put a burden like that on a property owner, we would have to be very circumspect about whether or not it's within our discretion. So, and I tend to think we'd be pretty hard pressed to do that, but we, we will, we'll give it some thought. Did, was that, was that everything? Was that, did you have any further?
Well, there's no real way to stop this, I guess, right? I mean, this is the wrong hearing for me to be talking at.
I, I would say this is the hearing where this question of the shared driveway is addressed. So to the extent you're
So I think that the number of cars coming in and out of that driveway, I think would pose a problem, yes.
Okay. All right. I see Andrea Dona. So if we can hear from you, you can unmute yourself.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Andrea Dona. I want to thank the committee. Oh, I live on 32 Liberty Street. I have some background noise right now. Sorry about that. So I'm living on, one moment. Thank you. Okay.
We understand.
You heard our bedtime travel. Okay. So I'm living currently on 32 Liberty Street. That's the corner lot with Wood A. So I live close to Brian, and I also live close to Jenna. And the lobby are talking. I used to live on 20, on 294 Riverside Drive, just across that brick house. So I know therefore a lot about the water table and the water problems we have. And my concern is due to not only the development on 291, but also to the development on Lexington that Brian referred to, and even further down like to Warner Street, there's a lot of new big development and fast healing of surfaces happening. And with that big driveway plus the big new houses, I'm very concerned about the water displacement. I think we will occur a lot of drainage trouble that's not only affecting the neighbors, but also the city as they have to repair more sidewalks and more streets. We just noticed that the new sinkhole is opening on Wood F. We had a sinkhole open last year, and the DPW had to come and fix it in some way. But now it's opening up just a few inches away from where they repaired it. I haven't reported it yet. So I'm concerned about what, what a big development in general does on that lot. I'm also concerned about also cars mentioned typically their families moving in that kind of houses. So they have for sure two big cars. And I don't see them all fit on that lot. And I'm concerned with everyone else about safety on our street for pedestrians, and especially these kids. There also used to be a school bus stop right there at the corner. And the last point I'm concerned about are the trees. And I also wonder, every owner has the right to do what they want with their lot. But I wonder, there's a solution how the trees could be saved, and that is really adapting the plan and not building as proposed. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Before I recognize, I realized, I not, being not the pro that our usual chair is, I forgot to mention, if you could be, be mindful of not repeating same, the same points raised by other people that have already been raised, and keeping comment as, as best as you can, limited to the question that is before us, which is approval of this shared driveway. I meant to, I meant to the beginning to impose a two-minute time limit at the beginning of this, given that I haven't, I'm not going to start now. But I will ask that people be mindful of the time. I will keep an eye on the clock. And if I, I will do, I will do my best to not cut people off. But if, if points are being raised that, that have been, been addressed and heard and are repetitive, I will go ahead and step in for, for time. We are, after all, a volunteer, a volunteer board. So with that, I can see if I can see any other hands. I think I saw a flash of Ian Gaeta.
That is correct. My name's Ian Gaeta. I live at 337 Riverside. I will keep my comments brief, but I echo the concerns of my neighbors. That, that street is, is full of children all day long. It is, you know, the neighborhood is already surrounded by, by a lot of traffic and adding up to eight more cars on the shared driveway. It, it will be a burden to the neighborhood. Similarly, I'm very concerned about the drainage and the trees. If anything can be done to save these very, very old maple trees, well over 200 years old, which really make the neighborhood what it is, and deliver a lot of sustainability goals with, with cooling of houses, with absorption of water and so forth. You know, that would be of peak importance to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody? Emma L., if you could give us your, oh, you know what, actually, can you hold that for just a minute? Ian, did you say your, your, your full name and address? I didn't hear.
Yep, sorry. 337 Riverside Drive.
Okay. So just we'll have it for the record. Thank you. All right. Now, Emma, if I could get your name and address for the record and your comment.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, please. So you're just naming an address for the
Okay. I'm Emma Linderman. I live at 277 Riverside Drive, and I have a question due to the high water table. And I guess my question is whether the driveway has to be asphalt or whether it can be something that allows for, I, I don't remember the right terms, but, but I'm just concerned, I'm wondering whether that driveway can be gravel or something that would allow for to eliminate water runoff.
All right. Thank you. I was listening to all of that. I had to put the dog out as I listened, multitasking. I think perhaps, just so I can clarify, were you asking about like a permeable a permeable material?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. That's a, that's a good, that's a good question. And, and, and we will circle back after public comment to ask about that. Other comment? See any hands raised that I'm missing? All right. So I am not seeing other, other comments. So before we, so we'll come back now. I'm going to come back to the, well, so first I'll come back to Carolyn and ask what? And ask what, if you have any additional comments at this moment?
No, there were, so I'm just gonna pull up. You know, there were some comments about drainage from DPW. About you know, that issue about additional runoff coming from the expanded driveway. Keep in mind, the driveway is in the same location as the existing driveway. It's slightly longer than the driveway plus the garage, I think by about 20 feet. So there's, that adds to a bit to the impervious surface, but obviously consolidated driveways, three to one, and just expanding the existing one will not have. You know, it's not a tremendous change from the footprint of the driveway standpoint. Obviously, the roofs are a different question, but what's before you is the driveway. In terms of the materials used, there, an applicant can certainly create a trap rock gravel driveway or some other surface, but that's not necessarily considered more permeable because the infiltration rates for compacted gravel are very close to what an asphalt driveway would be or a cement concrete driveway would be. There are ways to, you know, address drainage. The applicant could, for example, direct roof runoff into dry wells from the homes to make sure that to make sure that, that sort of captures additional runoff that might, um, otherwise drain onto the driveway and then into the street, um, for the northerly structure. But, um, otherwise, and when comparing it to individual driveways, um, you know, a shared driveway has much smaller footprint.
Okay. Um, uh, so one last call for, for public comment, and, and I'm gonna circle back to the board to make sure they don't have, okay, uh, Mr. Niette? Uh, I, I don't, there, there you go.
Of course, I've lived my whole life with people not pronouncing my name correctly, so it's no problem.
I am sorry, though.
Latish Nata, uh, I live at fourteen Liberty Street, and we, uh, abut the new project. Um, and so, thank you to the board, um, for having this meeting. Thank you to Mr. Hansel for providing, um, all the information about the plans for the new development. And we echo the comments of a number of our neighbors regarding the potential impact that this new development will have on the traffic in our neighborhood, our concerns about, uh, safety, not only for chi- kids, but for, for all the folks that live in this neighborhood, concerns about the water table as well. One of the things that we, as abutters, are very concerned about are the health and the safety of the trees. And I commend Mr. Hansel for hiring an arborist to attempt to maintain, as people have said, the beautiful canopy of trees that are, that are along our, uh, the border of our two homes. In the tree report, they really focus their attention on the sugar maples that are, uh, right at the beginning of our driveway and of, um, would border with the new home. But there are other, there are two other very large, um, I don't know if they're sugar maples, but I think they're maple trees, uh, along the same border that is, that are on Mr. Hansel's property. Um, and there was not really much discussion in the tree report regarding those two properties. And I assume that's because the foundation for the new home will not touch the roots for those properties. But looking at the plan, excuse me, the trees, um, for the, will not touch the new property. But looking at the plan that was introduced today, it seemed as if there was a garage right near where those two trees are going to be. So would the placement of the garage disrupt those two trees? Because those two trees are, although they're on Mr. Hansel's property, a very large portion of them hang over our property. So that's one of the, the concerns that we have. Again, we want to just reiterate, it'd be, I think, the preference of everyone in this neighborhood to maintain those trees, but it sounds as if, given the plans that Mr. Hansel is, has, um, intended, that it doesn't seem that those trees could be saved. But if a second opinion can be garnered, I, I would be supportive of that, to see exactly there's anything that can be done to save those trees and to achieve the goals that Mr. Hansel would like.
All right, very good, thank you. Um, all right, I'm gonna make, uh, a, a speak now for every, hold, you know, show me a hand now. Or forever hold your piece. Um, and a last call to the board, uh, if you have any questions before we, um, to the applicants, just before we close. Okay, so here.
I was wondering if Mr. Hansel could address that question about the two trees. Um, I have the tree report, if you want me to share my screen, just so we can look at them.
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Tate, are you talking about the two trees that, uh, Mr. Inteta just talked about, uh, near the garage? Just to be clear on what we're talking about.
That's what I want, verification on what trees we're talking about.
If Chris has the, if Chris has it up, and can we share, let Chris share a screen too?
Those are the trees back, back here.
No, those will not be touched. Trust, trust me, Mr. Tate, if I could do anything to save the two on the right-hand side going in, I would do it.
So the one, the ones in the foreground are, are gonna be affected by the foundation, but.
Correct, and there's no way around it, yeah.
Right, but from your plan, it looks like the garage is far enough away from those two in the rear that, that they'll be okay?
Yeah, so I work with Dave Hawkins, who was recommended to me by the tree arborist in Northampton, and he gave me two names or three names, he has to give three names, give me three names, and, um, so that's the person I work with, so it's, I can hire another tree arborist that Mr. Parcellati recommends, but it's gonna get the same results. Uh, I, so the thing is, I, trust me, if I could do anything not to cut those trees down, but the only way, he says, if you dig a foundation, they're gonna be gone. And the canopy is big, so, you know, they had to trim the canopy back and it, the trees, the first two won't make it, so, like, all I can say is I did everything in my power to save any and every tree there. From past experience, I know one thing, I'd rather go save them if possible. And I did go that route, and those are the only two that are gonna be, have to go.
Okay.
Verification.
David, oh, go ahead, sorry. Um, David.
It's the same, maybe you. Same question, so.
Okay. Um, all right, um, so if none of the planning board members have any further questions, and I don't see any further hands, um, can I have a motion to close public hearing? Anybody?
I move to close public comment.
Okay, thank you, uh, and anybody second? You guys are killing me, man.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, my audio doesn't seem to work all the time.
It's okay, it's okay. Um, okay, so, uh, on the motion to close public comment, Chris.
Yes.
Uh, David.
Yes.
Melissa.
I abstain from any voting on this one, since I wasn't here at the beginning of the presentation.
Oh, uh, is an abstention gonna mess with our quorum? Okay, all right, uh, okay, uh, abstention noted, Sam.
Yes.
Okay, and I also vote to close public, uh, comment. Um, okay, so any discussion with, uh, the board?
It se- it seems like, uh, he, you know, um, he's putting in one, one curb cut, one shared driveway, uh, it's not my thing, but, uh, I also not buying the house, so, you know, great, let him bu- let him build the shared driveway.
Um, I will say that I did, I have gone and, and looked to the property and, uh, and the parcels, and I think one shared driveway is a lot overall less asphalt, um, or concrete or whatever material that gets used than, than would be to have three. I could totally agree and understand where the neighbors are coming from, those trees are gorgeous. They also, just in the way that we are, uh, experiencing this all over the city, are approaching the end of their, um, you know, perhaps, perhaps approaching the end of their lifespan anyway, but I'm not an arborist, uh, I, I, at any, at any rate, so, I mean, they certainly look healthy now, um, but, um, but they will, there'll be a loss to the neighborhood, to be sure. Um, I don't know that requiring a second opinion, um, from an arborist will change the inevitable, um, but, uh, it is, I suppose we could, you know, ask for, uh, you know, further, further input. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to ask that of the, it is something that we could perhaps ask for, I, I don't know that I'm, I, I concur that that's a condition that we should put on at, at this point. Uh, so, over, overall, I, I, and I, and as far as the traffic goes, if, if the houses are gonna be there anyway, and the cars are gonna be there anyway, um, I, I actually think a si- a one-share driveway is much safer, and especially not on Riverside Drive, is much safer than, than to have three or four, where there, where there could just be one. Uh, that's, seems, that seems apparent to me, but that's, that, based on looking at the site. Um, anybody else? Yes, Carolyn? Oh, no. Yep, Chris?
Yeah, Marissa, I agree with you completely, um, the houses can be built by right, so it's, the cars are gonna, that come with the houses are gonna be there no matter what, and, and it's my feeling that the shared driveway is a safer condition, um, overall, given that the cars will be there one way or another. Um, so, I don't, I don't have any problem with the shared driveway. I, I do think that it should meet the requirements of, uh, the zoning provisions, which to my, I, it's a little too narrow, but, um, we can address that with a comment.
Uh, any, any other, uh, comments? Uh, so, go, go ahead, Carolyn.
Um, I was just gonna say that, um, certainly to confirm, you know, prior to final, um, sign-off of the plans or issuance of a, um, CO for the, um, first house, you know, they, they, we can make sure that a survey plan shows the extent of the driveway meeting this zoning standards, or you can just say, um, you know, that they have to show proof that they're meeting the requirements in the zoning. They're gonna have to come back and show, um, proof of recording of easements for the maintenance of the driveway at any rate, so that's gonna have to be a recorded, you know, a reference to a recorded plan, so that's gonna have to show the, um, driveway dimensions. So I, I think there's definitely, uh, places that can be, um, where that can be checked.
I'd like to.
Yes, David?
With regard to the, I'm, I'm, with regard to the house on the southwest side, um, I don't know how, how exactly this would work, but I, I'd like the arborist to give specific guidelines on how the air spading, like the dimension, like the radius around the, the trunk, et cetera, for air spading to make sure that that, uh, tulip poplar, uh, remains healthy, even with the shifted house. So if there's any way that the arborist, I don't think you need to go find another arborist, but if you can, is there a way that an updated arborist report, given the new location of the house, could be submitted to, to Carolyn and just before the, the permit is issued? Can we make that, hey, say that in, in less words than I just did?
Well, sure, I mean, typically in other permits, you've issued conditions where the arborist has to oversee tree protection measures as are initially recommended in the arborist's report, so you can require that before, um, construction on that site begins, that, um, there's a report from the arborist indicating that, in this case, it's Dave Hawkins, who he has overseen, um, the protective, um, measures that will, uh, are identified in his report and show that those have been done.
Fine. I just, I'd like a revised report to be in the record, that's all I mean.
You mean, is showing the, um, shifted house location?
Yeah, just the arborist's take on the dimension of air spading and, and et cetera, for the tulip poplar with the shifted house, exactly.
And we also add in those two other trees at the rear of the property? Because those weren't mentioned at all in the tree report. They're just kinda shown in the background. I don't know the nation of the.
There's no protection needed, though, they're, they're far enough away.
I have no idea, they're not shown on the plan.
Um, so yes, you can also, um, require as part of that condition that tree protection for those trees on the far western, um, property line, um, are installed. Because even if they are, I mean, during co- you know, construction can be messy, and if it's not specifically identified on a, on site, um, contractors may decide to store stuff that over there that's, you know, because it's an easy out-of-the-way place, so that would certainly help, um, ensure that that area is sort of just walled off.
So charging all the foundation fill on the root system of those trees isn't gonna do them any favors.
Right.
Okay, um, so why, the note that I made of that is that, uh, is a condition of having the ar- an arborist oversee the tree protection for the popular tulip and the two trees on the, uh, the back, uh, there's probably a more specific way to say that, and to demonstrate, uh, compliance, um, and have a, uh, with, with a, with a plan, uh, on file with the application. Does that, does that sound right, Carolyn?
Um, so compliance with, uh, with the standards, or you, with the tree, are you trying to?
Arborist's tree protection, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I think, um, just consistent, um, so, uh, consistent with the arborist's report with the, um, adjusted location of the house foundation.
We could specify those trees as the rear property line of lot three. I wish, I wish I knew my trees better and I could tell you the, you know, the type.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I hope Carolyn, yes, I'm gonna give this a, a try, um, in terms of the conditions, but I can, trust Carolyn will help us clean it up. Um, any further suggestions or thoughts from the board, questions? Um, so what I, what I have, so in the, um, in the staff report, uh, the proposed conditions in the staff report are prior to any site work, the applicant shall install, well, so this is kind of incorporated into what we just said. Tree protection is noted by the applicant's arborist and shall submit a report by the arborist indicating these measures have been installed. I guess that would be amended to make sure that, that, that plan showed the, um, uh, the changed location of the house, or, or properly, the, properly indicate the location of the house. And prior to selling the first lot, the applicant shall show proof of, uh, recording of easements for the maintenance of the driveway, the register of deeds. Prior to issuance of the, of CO on the first lot, the applicant shall show compliance with the tree replacement requirements for the trees over twenty inches, uh, that have been removed. Um, it's been proposed of, that we also make a condition of showing proof of, like, zoning compliance on the driveway. I, I personally think that is, you know, uh, I, as, as, not to talk like a lawyer, but I just, I kinda have a, a thing about not, um, asking permission or, or, uh, requiring a demonstration of something that is already required by rule or regulation. Um, and I think that is redundant of the regulations. I, I guess a question that I would have for Carolyn is if the, you know, if we get to the end of this and they've poured, they've poured the, the driveway and it is a few feet short of, of how wide it's supposed to be, like, what's the remedy then? Do we make them go back and do it, like, what's the?
Yeah, they have to comply, so they would have to, the building commissioner would, would issue a violation of, uh, based on the zoning, and they'd have to correct it.
Okay, I mean, I am satisfied, I mean, to Chris's point, which I, I, I'm not, uh, I don't do plans all the time, and so I'm not, uh, doubting, uh, that aspect of it, of what, of what you see, Chris. I do think, though, that the, the rule is clear, the, you know, the, the requirements are clear and the measure, the, they, we are not the, the, the sort of infor- the zone code enforcement, um, aspect. I mean, not the, we're, we are not the ones who will be enforcing the, the building requirements, um, enforcement. Um, so I think that is redundant of another, uh, entity's authority and, and job. But, but, I mean, if people wanna make it a condition, we can.
Could we make a condition of a, a revised plan at, at some point that just shows dimensions of the driveway? Because I think if they dimension the driveway, it would come.
Yeah, I mean.
Thirteen or fourteen feet.
You, you could try, you could, you could submit, um, you could require a pre-submital, um, final plan showing the relocation of the house and the dimension driveway meeting the zoning.
I'm okay with seeing it with the recorded, um, easement plan, but I, I just, I feel like the plans that we see need to have more information on them. I mean, if we're not seeing where the trees are, we're not seeing the dimension, there's, there's very few requirements for, for this, uh, special permit. special permit, and so it's just hard not to have those, those dimensions on the plane.
Yeah, you know, he, they have to submit a new set of plans anyway with the revised house location, so they can just make it very clear on those.
Okay, um, so then I guess I would put the, the condition being uh
This dimension of driveway width, you know, driveway dimension.
Well, I think, or the, 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 is, is to file a revised plan that shows, you know, you know, all of the, with, with the, uh, you know, the, the different location of the house, and we can say to do it with the easements with the, you know, with the easement plan. Does that sound right, Carolyn?
Um, yeah, so we could, hold on, sorry, I'm just scrolling down here, just a minute. You know, you could attach it to um the, prior to the first lot sale, the applicant shall show proof of recording of the easements uh for the maintenance of the driveway, the register of deeds. Uh, and a plan set shall be attached to the easement um document showing the dimension driveway that is compliant with zoning.
Thank you. I'm not a complicated guy.
No, it's, it's fine. It's, I'm, I'm not, um, uh I, there's certainly nothing wrong with that. And, you know, it's helpful, frankly, it's probably more helpful to those of us who are not the plan designers and people to, to have a little clearer plans and more accurate plans to begin with. Uh, so, um. Okay, um, so do I have, uh, if there are no other comments, if I can have a motion to, uh, if I can have a motion to approve with the conditions that we laid out, which I, uh, we can, we probably don't want me to read it out. I don't know if we want Carolyn to read it out, but if, but if I can have the motion, we can um, for the record, sort out exactly what those conditions are.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the permit for a shared driveway with conditions uh to be outlined by Carolyn right now.
Uh, do you want to get a second for that before I do it?
Uh, well, how will they know what their second day? Uh, but yes, that's fine.
Second.
All right.
Um, so then as part of the discussion, what I have is, prior to any site work, the applicant shall install tree protection is noted by the applicant's arborist and shall submit a report by the arborist indicating the measures have been installed. The report shall um identify the protection measures for the tulip poplar and the two trees along the western property line with adjusted location for uh the house. Prior to selling the first lot, the applicant shall show proof of recording of easements for the maintenance of the driveway at the registry of deeds. Uh, easement shall be recorded with a plan showing location of the lots and dimension driveway. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the first lot, the applicant shall show compliance with tree replacement requirements for the, all, for the two trees over twenty inches BBH that have been removed.
Um, all right, so we've had that moved and seconded, and the conditions absolutely clarified for the record, so with that, I will take the vote. Uh, so Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Uh, Melissa? Is abstaining. Uh, Sam?
Yes.
Uh, and I also vote yes. All right, um, right, that was a good discussion, um. So I think that is everything, except for that we need to very quickly uh approve the minutes. We have minutes from March eleventh.
And we're going back to the, we're going back to the other permit.
Oh, God, right, shoot, I mean, delighted. Um, and thank you for your patience and hanging in there, I apologize. Okay, so we are going back to the seven fifty uh PM uh agenda item, which is a special, special permit amendment by Eric Broadbent and Susan McCray, a lot configuration modifications and exemption from tree replacement for solar access at two fifty four Old Wilson Road in Florence. So, thanks for hanging in there. Sorry, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself a little bit.
Well, I appreciate um you're hanging in there and for the effort to get a quorum and, and for whatever hoops had to be jumped through to assemble, um, these are extenuating circumstances. So Susie and I are here, and uh we have our representative with Berkshire Design Group who has developed the site plan. And um, I should have mentioned Susie McCray, Eric Broadbent, ninety five Barrett Street, but hopefully future of two fifty, two sixty four Old Wilson Road. Um, a beautiful piece of property, we're very fortunate, and we look forward to working with the city to enhance that entire landscape, so thank you. And I'll turn it over to Jeff, who will address the site plan, and we appreciate your consideration.
Super. Thanks, Eric and Susie and um, and planning board. Um, and somebody, somebody mentioned, just as a side note, that, um, you know, this felt like getting back to the old days, and I, this, this does sort of rekindle those, the old days of sitting in the back of the, of the council chambers until midnight, because the hearing before you was long. So this is, I appreciate everybody hanging in there. Um, if I can share my screen, I will just real quickly sort of walk you through what the proposal is um, and, and what we've got. So um, this is at the former Pine Grove Golf Course, hopefully everybody can see this site plan. And uh, last year, part of the proposal was when the, when the golf course was closed, was to um donate roughly a hundred acres to the city um for conservation purposes. And as a result of that, carve out roughly the twelve, thirteen acres for um five single family lots um that the prior owner had, had subdivided and sold as part of his deal. So um Eric and Susie purchased those, tho- those parcels, that twelve, thirteen acres um with the lots that had been created at that time for that permit. There was one, one previous amendment to this permit. Um, and I apologize, this does get confusing, because this was done by a special permit that created these lots um without frontage. Um, but we did come in with one prior amendment for an actual house plan, their house, uh, on what is lot two. Um, at the time that this was permitted, this plan was permitted, these were all sort of fictitious, um, you know, uh, uh, house uh footprints, because we really, really didn't have a buyer or any, any notion of, um, you know, what those may be in actuality. So um the previous amendment revised um what was happening on lot two. And so the amendment that's before you tonight is really dealing with um these internal lot lines as well as the locations of some of these other homes. And particularly with what was um previously the, the prior owner's home. Um, originally, they thought that may, might, um, you know, rehab it, but it's, it really wasn't worth you know, much, much in terms of, of resale and, and restoration value. So um trying to reconfigure the lots a little bit to make these a little bit more, more valuable and, and, um, you know, nicer locations. So what you see here is the same um outline of, of the uh parcels to be developed. The remainder, you know, this doesn't affect the city conservation land at all. Uh, lot two is exactly where it was. Um, the one difference that you'll see relative to property lines is previously the lot two, lot three division was, was, you know, upwards in, in this location. We've moved it further south, keeping lots three and four more in similar size. And really, this has to do with keeping all of the, the, the uh easements and agreements with the cell tower, um, the fall zone, all of that on lot two, what will be Eric and Susie's parcel, so it doesn't encumber or become a question at all um for, for any of the future lots. The other thing this does, again, like I mentioned, up, up um along Old Wilson Road where, where the former house was, um, because that house is now gone, it creates an opportunity to really build houses on the northerly property line, which is, which looks out over the old fairways and is really, you know, where the most desirable locations are. And so really, this just flips the flag lot from, you know, what was the flagpole was on this northerly line in, in this location. And so hopefully, um, you know, uh, now the, the flag lot has been flipped, so that the, you know, allows the, those two houses to be located in that location. Um, and then lastly, what this does is the driveway to lots three and four had formerly cut across sort of the middle of the lots. Um, we're proposing to bring them, bring them down to the lower elevation where, um, again, just it's, it's flatter, it's, it's a more conducive area on the site. We have uh valid perks for both those lots, and there's much nicer views um and much less disruptive to sort of this middle hillside that's, that's pretty heavily wooded, so. There was, um, as part of this um request or this amendment, we are requesting a waiver for a number of trees that are being removed for solar purposes. So hopefully, everybody can see this plan. What this shows is what, you know, these trees here at lot two were part of the prior amendment um and approval. What we're asking for um in this amendment tonight is removal of these trees in here as well as these couple of trees in this location. Anything you see highlighted in orange or, or red are ones that were requesting a waiver, uh, a replacement waiver for due to solar purposes. And what, you know, what these Xs show are really the, the solar availability for those homes um throughout the year. So anything that falls, you know, to the west, south, and east of, you know, these, these yellow uh Xs are, are, you know, areas that would affect the solar gain for those, for those homes. We did provide an updated table, and the trees, obviously, that are removed for construction purposes, we really don't have the ability to plant those anywhere on site due to the fairly heavily wooded nature of the site. So those, um, they're, they're offering up a payment in lieu of um replacing those. I think we did receive comments from the DPW. I don't imagine any of those are um anything that concern, they're, they're um of too concerning to us. They were, some are conditions remaining from the prior permit, others um are just clarifications that I don't, I don't see any issue with, so. I think with that, I'll try to keep that brief and open it up to any questions.
Anyone on the uh planning board have any questions?
I, I have a couple, Jeff. Um. Is there, is there an easement for the driveway to the new flag lot that's, that's cutting through the other lot?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's gonna be a homeowner's agreement that, you know, deals with all the easements, all of those, a lot of those are already in place. And there are certainly other documents that, um, you know, are gonna affect um or impact all, you know, all five lots. So most of those documents, and Eric and Susie may be able to speak better to it, but I think a lot of those are at least in draft format, if not final format. So it will deal with all those cross easements, utilities, access, maintenance, all of those things.
And uh generally, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but it might, it might lead to my next question. Um, so are all of these houses kind of in some sort of agreement to be purchased at this point? Like, are these the final locations and sizes and everything?
We hope so. I, I think the, these are certainly a lot further along than was what was shown in the, in the original permit. You know, that there is an actual buyer now, there are actual, um, you know, um buyers for some of these lots that are, that are looking at them um with, with house footprints that are being considered. So I think this is certainly a lot more developed than it was originally. I can't say that, you know, some of these won't change, but I think, you know, we've certainly gone through this process enough to to feel pretty good about these locations. And um, again, I've, I've been a little bit conservative with some of these footprints in the event that, that some of them get a little bit smaller, actually.
So I'll just add, um, we have engaged Wright Builders as the site development contractor, and they um have emphasized us net zero, and that hencewise has um determined the scope of clearing in, on the further away lots. Um, and they have clients that they've spoken with, and we don't have anything under agreement, but we believe this, these are the viable sites for homes with a minimal impact. And that, that is under their advisement and also Jeff and Berkshire Design. So it's, it's a lot more reasonable, and we're, you know, we're trying to move the site development work forward, which is why I thank you for having a quorum, because it's, it's timing is important, um, so. Thank you.
And Eric, you're, you're, you're getting, which is, my, my recollection from the last hearing is that these waivers for the, for the tree replacement requirements are somewhat predicated on the solar access for net zero homes as well as the open space, is that correct, Carolyn?
That's right. So the board can consider a waiver from um full tree replacement um for the purposes of providing open space and uh net zero energy homes. There's some other elements, but they have to be at least those um two components. Um, or, um, you know, affordable housing is another mechanism or um avenue that could be provided to, to meet that standard. So you need to see that, that's important as part of the plan that's submitted to the board, is to see that's what their goal is. They're, and they're only seeking the waiver for those trees that are necessary to meet that solar gain and not for any of the trees that are ancillary and just they want for views or for other clearing, which is why um Jeff described the trees that are just being taken down for construction and not being sought for a waiver for replacement.
But it's also tied to be, being net zero homes, which, I guess, we don't know that that's what they're gonna be yet, because we don't have buyers or finalized.
Well, I will say that the homeowners association agreement, which has been approved by us and submitted, um, and it's in front of our attorneys, and Wright Builders has helped us construct that. Do require net zero, so, and with them as the builder, that's their aim and desire, so we expect that they will be.
I guess the other piece is, so the, you can grant the permit. I mean, it's sort of a chicken and egg. They're saying they're gonna do this, they're showing the plans about how they do this, but obviously you want to see it on the back end that they've done it. And what happens is, it's really sort of, you did this in the conditions for the original um waiver um that it, at, at the time of CO is when the um tree replacement is um sort of all tabulated and finalized. So that's the point at which they show, here's where, how we met net zero. Therefore, we've met the conditions of the planning board, and if they haven't, then, then the result would be they just pay into the tree fund for those additional trees. So it's all sort of checked out and balanced um upon certificate of occupancy.
Thank you.
I wanna, I'm having trouble like drilling down on this. I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's very clear on the plan with the purple and the uh, let's say mauve trees, uh, like which ones you're requesting the waiver for. But I'm unclear, like, the logic of why these were requested a waiver. And it looks like in the background, there's like a bunch more trees that you're not taking down, which is fine. So I'm having trouble understanding why, like, these pink trees are required. I guess, I'm not saying you're doing something wrong, I just, it's, it's not clear that the, the analysis is not clear from the documentation that we have, I guess. And I know it's just really money in the fund, I guess, so, but I just wonder if we're setting up a system And I know it's just really money in the fund, I guess. So, but I just wonder if we're setting up a system that can be checked at some point.
So David, just to your, you know, your question, that the process that we went through to identify, you know, both the trees for removal in general, but then also those for the solar waiver were really sort of designing and laying out the homes and getting all that grading right to then understand what the limits of work were or the limits of grading were. And then so within those limits, we could then identify and go out and survey any of those trees that would fall under the ordinance. So, you know, in this case, we identified all of those trees and some of those trees that you see underneath that aren't being removed are ones that were right on the fringe or just outside the edge of the limit of work or a limit of grading that we would leave. So any of the ones that we're highlighting on this plan, on the, on the, that plan, I can actually bring it up, um, on, on this. So any of these are ones that need to be removed for either the homes or the grading or the driveway or for, for solar. Most of these are for, you know, due to the driveway and the homes, but fall within the area of what would be needed for solar access. If that helps explain.
Yeah. I mean, is the logic, I'm just trying to understand how like at the backend, how we actually verify that. I, I don't actually know how that works. Like, um, I don't have an answer, but, uh, I mean, I trust that that's what you're doing. It seems, seems right. I don't know. It just seems a little bit fuzzy, I suppose. Maybe what we need is just a more of a, a bigger drawing to, of that area of, of those lower south lots and just show the specific trees and, and how the shadows work or something. I assume that's what you did to figure them out anyway.
All right. Uh, so we'll, we'll come back to the board, uh, in just a moment, but, uh, is there anybody here from the public that has any comments? Okay. Not yet. Not hearing any. Um, okay. So just briefly, one last pass. Anybody have questions for the applicants before we close public comment? Okay. So, uh, seeing none, hearing none, uh, do I have a motion to close public comment?
I'd like to move that we close the public comment period.
All right. In a second. I think I saw Melissa. Okay. Um, okay. So I'll call the roll. David?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
And I as well. Yes. Okay. So, uh, public comment is closed. Um, any further discussion from the board? Okay. Um, uh, okay. So, um, with that said, any further comment from Carolyn or from the board or anybody at all? Um, do we have a handle on the, I know there's some, on the staff report, some conditions noted. Does anybody want to, or do we want to have Carolyn summarize the conditions from the, proposed conditions from the discussion and the staff report?
Sure, I can do that. Um, so this relate, these relate to the comments you were just, um, describing and discussing that, the, um, at the time of the building permit application, they should, the applicant shall provide the information, that the new houses, excuse me, will meet the net, net zero energy standards. And, uh, oops, I, I think that also that prior, we should, there should be a condition about, prior to issuance of the final CO, that those have then actually been built to, um, meet the net zero energy standards. Also prior to final certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall, uh, show that a payment be made, um, for the, um, to mitigate for the 141 inches of tree that are removed that are not subject to the requested waiver. And just to sort of wrap it all up, that all other conditions from the original permit still stand. This isn't a replacement permit, but it's just sort of an added permit. And I think, um, I think that, that, um, is what I have and that addresses your comments, but, um, obviously if that isn't, then feel free to add.
Anybody feel like that? There's anything they'd add? Chris?
The only, the only thing is, um, I don't know if it's our responsibility or not, but just to protect the, the homeowners. It sounds like there's going to be a homeowners association. I just want to make sure that the driveway for that flag lot.
True.
There's, we're protecting that buyer that they can, that they're allowed to access their driveway.
Right. So you can add another condition. That's a good point, um, that you raised that, um, prior to, um, actually I think probably before building permit could, should be before building permits issued for the, either of those lots, one or two. Oops. I'm not sure if that's what, how they're labeled. Um, the flag lot and the original house lot, um, that, um, cross access easements are granted for, um, the driveway, um, that, uh, for the flag lot.
Thank you. This is an easement. Um, there's a collection of easements and that has been noted.
Okay. Um, okay. So, um, if that, if that marks all the conditions that, that would be proposed, do I have, uh, hear a motion to, um, approve this? What is it? It's a site plan amendment actually, right?
Special permit.
Special permit, sorry. Um, with the conditions just noted by Carolyn.
I'll approve, I'll motion to, um, I'll move to approve the special permit with conditions noted by Carolyn.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, just getting late. I don't, I didn't mean to react. Um, uh, so I shall call the roll. Uh, David?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
And I also vote, uh, yes. Very, very good. Well, you know, when we meet in person again, we can like throw, you know, paper clips at each other to, you know, wake up.
Great quoruming everyone. Yes.
Yeah. No, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
For, for coming in. Um, good luck with your project. It looks like, it looks like a nice project and, uh, it's going to be beautiful home. So, uh, good luck with that.
Anything.
Um, thank you.
All right. So briefly, uh, before we go, uh, we should approve the minutes.
So I only got, um, two of the three sets I had planned to try to get to you. So I think it's just March, just the March minutes. Um, actually, um, March 8th and 25th, I think it was.
11th and 25th.
March 11th, March 11th. Yeah.
Do we have to do them separately?
No.
So, okay. So have people read the minutes or reviewed the minutes of, uh, March 11th and March 25th? And do I hear a motion to a, well, do I hear any corrections or additions or amendments?
Okay. I, I think I heard Sam go, uh, probably to approve the minutes.
And it's good.
Okay. So I will take that as a motion to, um, approve the minutes of March 11th and the 20, what, 5th. Do, um, do I have a second? Thank you. All right. So I will call the roll. Um, Chris?
Still reading them. Let me vote last.
Okay. I'll call you last. Um, David?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Uh, Chris, the speed reader?
Yes.
That was a thumbs up, but go with the yes.
But now I have read them, so I can say it.
Okay. Very good. It's very diligent of you. Um, and I also vote yes. And let it be done. Uh, yes, Carolyn?
Nope. That's all I have.
I move to close the meeting.
So we have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second. So I shall again call the roll. Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And I also vote to adjourn the meeting. So, well, that was fun, y'all.